Good evening, we're gonna get started. Thank you. Good evening, welcome to the Danvers Zoning Board of Appeals. If you would like an agenda for tonight's meeting, there are some agendas up here and they're also outside the door in the sleeve. We'll be handling the continued cases first and then we'll be going to the new case. We have one new case tonight. Is that you? Yeah, okay. We have minutes from the last meeting. Can I have a motion to accept?
So moved, Madam Chair.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Let me just ask everyone to turn off their cell phones so they're not ringing and interrupting us. Thank you. I'm gonna introduce the members of the board. To my right, John Bonner, Ken Scholes, who is our clerk, Jeff Sauer, Ken Jervanen, and Corinne Doherty, and I'm Becky Kilborn, the chair tonight. We also have from code administration, Rich Maloney, our building inspector, and Kathy Archibald, our secretary. And I'll just go over the procedure for tonight's meeting. We will call the case and then we will ask the applicant to come up here and present their information, whatever they have. And then we will go to the board and we'll ask the applicant questions. Each person will ask. After we ask questions, we'll go out to the audience so that the audience can ask questions or comment on the case. And then we will go back to the board for deliberations. And based on what the comments are from the board, I'll give you your options for the evening. And is there anything else we need to do? We're ready to get started?
I think you got it all.
Okay.
All right. Our first case is Danversport Yacht Club Marina LLC, Joseph D. Lorenzo, docket number 19-4813, requesting a special permit to modify an existing special permit 13-4465 to install new signage in accordance with section 37 of the Danvers zoning bylaws at 107 Elliott Street. Madam Chair, we are in receipt of a letter dated June 13, 2019. On behalf of Danversport Marina, I would like to request another continuance to July 15th meeting of the zoning board of appeals regarding our request for modification to a special permit, best Julie D. Lorenzo.
Can I have a motion to continue?
Madam Chair, I move that we grant the continuance.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Is that July 15?
Okay.
July 15.
Thank you.
Our second case is Paul Malvich and Gene Dion, docket number 19-4817, requesting a variance to allow the construction of a duplex on the property with less than the required area in accordance with section 2.9, table 2 of the Danvers zoning bylaws at 56 Adams Street. Madam Chair, we are in receipt of another letter, also dated June 13. Dear board members, on behalf of the applicant, John Thompson trustee, we hereby request that this matter be continued without discussion to the board's meeting July 15. The applicant is reviewing an option that would eliminate the need for zoning relief if successful. This will be determined prior to that July 15 meeting. Signed Nancy McKeon Esquire.
Can I have a motion to continue?
Madam Chair, I move that we continue this to July 15.
I will second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
And our third continued case, Gregory J. Maynard, docket number 18-4753, requesting a variance and a finding to demolish existing dwelling and construct a new single-family dwelling in accordance with section 3.17.1.1.3 of the Danvers zoning bylaws at 28 Brentwood Circle.
Is there anyone here from 28 Brentwood Circle? Okay, we called this case at the last meeting and the applicant didn't show up and so we're calling it again at this meeting. And since the applicant's not here, this was a case that was continued for a year that had to get approval from town meeting. So the applicant's not here, so what we're gonna do is just withdraw the case without prejudice and then if they wanna reapply, is that what you want us, you think we should do?
I don't think you can withdraw the case. You just have to vote on it.
So vote to... What would you like us to do?
Well, Madam Chair, given that nothing was presented to us, I would not vote in favor of this.
I mean, this application was originally presented April 2018.
Of last year.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right, he needed town meeting approval for...
For the land.
Right, an old cul-de-sac that never built.
And apparently he didn't get it.
We have contacted this gentleman on 521, 64, and 624, so...
So if we deny the application, he can't come back for two years, right?
Well, for that particular... He was trying to get zoning relief for the front setback. He may not need that, but he will need if he's... You know, I met him out on the property a long time ago.
Okay.
The lot is still gonna be undersized, I believe.
Buildable, yeah.
So he will need a finding, which will need something different.
Okay.
So you could vote it down.
Okay.
And you'd still have to refile something, but I think, I believe it's gonna be a finding.
So it wouldn't be some...
Instead of the variance.
Instead of the variance?
Right, correct.
Okay. So can I have a motion to deny this application?
Madam Chair, I move that we deny the application for 28 Brentwood Circle.
I'll second that.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, thank you.
All right. Our fourth continued case, Jam Five Properties LLC, docket number 19-4820, requesting a dimensional variance for front, side, and rear setbacks and lot area per unit for multiple multi-family housing in accordance with section 7, table 2 of the Danvers zoning bylaws at 21 School Street.
And Bob Signetti, who's a member of this board, just walked in and we...
Just came in, sorry I'm late.
What do you think?
And who's here for 21 School Street?
Hi, I'm Eric Lomas.
Okay.
Attorney for the applicant.
Okay.
So this property is a unique situation in that it was historically three-family.
Mr. Lomas, I think it would be better if you'd come up here.
Sure.
Okay, we'll let the people comment back there, but it'll be easier for us to hear.
Can I have the hand me up here?
Yes.
All right, so...
We're on TV, so we have to...
Yeah, you know, I understand.
You have to be near a microphone, thank you.
So this property was a three-family, historically, and it lost its grandfathered status due to some merger issues.
Mm-hmm.
And they were here within the past year, the prior owner, and got a variance on this property in construction of a single-family.
Yes, we granted that variance.
Correct, yes.
Yes.
And I think the intended use at that time was the family also owned the neighboring property.
Yes.
And they wanted to use this property as a primary residence. Plans changed and then they sold the property to the applicant. You know, in large part, this is a multi-family neighborhood and he wants to bring back the property to that, to that status, which is a, as a three-family. There are many that do exist on smaller and slightly larger lots in the neighborhood. For example, 14A School Street is a two-family on a 4,300 square foot lot. 25 is a two-family on a 5,100 square foot lot. 28 School Street is a three-family on a 4,100 square foot lot. And there are many other examples. So I think it's safe to say based on that that you not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood as a three-family than as a single-family.
Mm-hmm.
From a size standpoint, it's important to point out that, from the plans that you have here, we're not looking to change the size of the structure that the board approved. So it's gonna be on the same footprint that the board had already approved. And then finally, just wanted to point out the obvious that, you know, we do have well documented need for housing in Massachusetts and in Danvers in general. And then I don't know if the board is most likely aware of the Governor Baker's proposed legislation as of May 2019, basically to help communities modify their zoning in order to lower the barrier to create housing units. And again, this property's a unique situation that was historically three-family, so the board does have the opportunity to allow those units to be reinstated to the town's housing stock. And there's a growing push at the state level to incentivize projects that...
Well, there's a grandfather time period for that to be allowed. You know that.
Right.
Right, okay. Which expired 33 years ago.
Right.
Right, okay. Just to be clear.
Mm-hmm.
All right. So I'm gonna go to the board, but there was a permit issued for a single-family house to be built.
Correct.
On this lot.
Correct.
Okay. After the applicant purchased it.
Or prior to.
Prior to?
There was a variance that... Sorry, I'm not sure, I misheard.
Okay, okay, all right.
Yeah, so no, so the family, the Cahills, it was non-Cahill, so you granted a variance, then that was extended.
Okay.
And then the applicant purchased it, yes.
Okay. All right, I'm gonna go to the board. If you don't have anything else, and I'm sure we have questions for you. Okay. And I'm sure the neighbors are here too, so we'll talk about that. So I'm gonna go down to Mr. Signetti and start with him, because he was here when the variance was granted.
Yeah, what makes you say there was a three-family house there? I came to town in 1967. On that lot was a small beer and wine store known as Rigby's. That's 1967. So, and they were in business for a few years and then the building went vacant for a while. And then, I don't know whether that burnt down or what happened, and then Charlie Cahill bought the lot. So what makes you say there was a three-family house there? I don't ever remember a three-family house there.
It was, it was, I was just going off of the minutes from the prior hearing. In the minutes, it was stated that it was, it was, it was that, I think it was a package store, like you say, in the bottom with two residential units that were...
There were no two residential, it was only a single-story building to my recollection and not very big. So maybe the neighbors could clear it up for me, but I don't ever remember a three-family house there. And that building was very, very, very small. Okay, so that's, that's my, my first question. The next question is, why didn't you go through this process before you built the building? Why didn't, why didn't you make sure that you could've had a three-family house there before you built the building, which is very large? Before you built the building? I mean, usually that's what applicants do. They make sure they can get what they want before they put a stick in the ground.
Right.
You did just the opposite.
Well, I mean, I can't speak to necessarily the intention at the time, but I think from a legal standpoint, it was just, there was a worry that the variance would expire, so they figured in order to preserve their right that that's, they'd start the foundation process.
Well, the variance, what, at two years, right?
One year with a 1/6 month penalty.
Yeah.
Yes.
And you could've, yeah, all right. I have no other questions. I don't ever remember a three-family house on that building and I take issue with that.
I don't have any questions, I have comments, but no questions.
I as well, no questions. I'll wait for comments.
Okay.
I would just like to know whether they're gonna park cars for three units.
Well, let's ask them a question.
Whether he's gonna park cars for three units.
If you have on the, on that plan in front of you...
Okay.
I'm sorry, the architect's...
Typically, we get a parking plan for three units. If we have a, if we approve a three-unit, two-unit, five-unit, whatever, then typically we get a site plan and it shows where all those units...
Who's the parking?
Oh, the parking is, and also, not to interrupt you, but that, and that it complies with our parking requirements for a multi-family.
Yep.
Which would be six spaces?
I think on that plan, we, that in front of you, there's gotta be an area where, not on the site plan, but on one of these here that shows a...
Parking?
Yeah.
Sorry. You have a garage, right?
Yep.
With a two-car garage.
I have no further questions, Madam Chair.
Okay. Ken?
What's the maximum, what's the height of this, tallest height of this?
The height right now? Thirty feet.
Thirty feet?
Which isn't allowed.
When the zoning board granted the variance, the only requirement was that it was a single-family home, it meant all the dimensional requirements of the bylaw. And that it does. So as big as it is, it meets the height restriction because it's 30 feet from the midpoint of the highest cable. Meets that. And the, they had an engineer do the street averaging on Franklin and School Street. So we have a provision in our bylaw that allows you not to be setback any farther than the average. So we have two legal street averages for Franklin, one for Franklin, one for School. We have a certified as-built for the foundation, one of us in, so that house meets...
All the requirements.
For all intents and purposes, the zoning setbacks for that area and the height. So that's why they go to permit for a single-family home.
I just have one question.
Are you done, Ken?
I'm done.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Done, done, thank you.
So they took out, you took out the building permit for a single-family home?
Yeah.
What plans?
With plans.
For a single-family home and then you built a multi-dwelling?
No, it's not, it's not, the dwelling's not completed, it's still in the, it's just half the...
It's a ref, we haven't done any inspections yet.
Yeah.
Well, it's framed out, I mean, it's all framed.
It's just a rough frame.
Yeah, I'm sorry, it's framed out.
Okay. I don't have anything further.
So I just went through what you submitted in your application saying that this is a grandfathered lot, which was a three-unit dwelling, had it been rebuilt by 1986. That's your text. Okay?
Correct.
So, so I just wanna clarify that even though Mr. Signetti doesn't think it ever was a three-family, if it was a three-family, that expired in 1986.
Right.
By your own statement, which would've been 33 years ago. Okay. Are you aware that the neighbors, when, when they came in and asked us for this variance, had told the neighbors that they were in the, in that area, that they were gonna build a small house there? And that's why the neighbors, you know, essentially supported their subdividing that lot? I don't know when you got involved in this? You weren't here for the original variance?
I was not.
Okay.
Yep.
Are you aware that that was what was told, I mean, there...
Yeah. I mean, I just, what I'm aware of is from the, from the minutes of the, of the...
Right.
Of the prior hearing, yeah.
Okay, okay. I'm disappointed because that was what we were told, you know, that there was gonna be, it's a 6,000 square foot lot, which is an undersized lot, a single-family house, and our one zoning needs 10,000 square feet.
Right.
So it's 6,000 square feet and we said, okay, you can have a little house on a 6,000 square foot lot. And now you want a three-family house on a 6,000 square foot lot, which is, seems excessive.
Okay.
But I'll hold my comments, all right?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, and I mean, from what I've seen before, and this is, the board would agree, I hope, that this is a multi-family neighborhood by a requirement.
But those are old, you know, were approved many, many, many years ago. Yeah, yeah. Do you have any other comments before I go to the audience?
No.
Okay. They might have questions for you.
Sure.
All right. Mr. Duggan.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Matthew Duggan, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 1. Just for a point of information, I believe that this applicant was before you not long ago and they were referred to the land use or the planning department? Was that my recollection or yours?
Yeah. Sorry.
Go ahead. You can answer his question.
Yeah, so that's, step two is the planning.
Planning department?
Yeah.
This was one, because the owner owned the house next door and this lot, it got merged, okay, over the years. You wanna explain it? What happened?
Sure, there's a merger doctrine in Massachusetts and it's to eliminate non-conforming lots.
Okay.
So if you own two lots right next to each other and one of them's not, and one of the others is non-conforming and they're held in common ownership, that lot line disappears for zoning purposes.
So what happened is that they, yeah, go ahead.
So in this case, the Cahills always kept the two lots separate.
Correct.
And I can't, I remember the package store, it was in a, like a ranch house.
Yeah.
So the old three-family might've predated the package store.
Okay.
They made it that burnt down and then they built the package store and then they tore that down.
It was the same size as that little convenience store, Caddy Corner.
Yeah.
That size.
So, so the properties went into probate after a death in the family. In probate, the lots merged at some point. The Cahills didn't intend that to happen, but it happened and that's, the Cahills came back to the board and said, well, we never intended this to happen. It did, and the board looked at that and gave them a variance, but it was very clear it was for a single-family home. Whatever they discussed, the only requirement that this board said was that it needs all the zoning setbacks.
Right. And maybe that's to our detriment and our fault, that we should've maybe limited the size of the house, but we, we thought that their word was good, that they were gonna build a small, single-family house.
Yeah.
And what they ended up doing is dividing the lot and then selling it.
Yeah, and I recall that conversation because there was an issue with a shed that straddled the property line.
Absolutely.
And that was removed, yeah. That was an issue, so...
And that was one of the things we told them, they had to remove the shed.
Okay, so just back to the referral to the planning department. So now they're back here, but they, did they ever, anything ever...
They still have to go for a special permit with planning.
If.
If this approves here. If we approve it, they still have to go to the planning board.
That's fine. All right, so the next point is, today, it's, the building permit is for a single-family.
Absolutely.
Correct.
It looks like a two-family to me and I hear them asking for a three-family, so I'm kind of like confused about what's happening.
Okay, so I reviewed the plans today with Mr. Maloney that were submitted when the permit was issued. And those plans are for a single-family house with multiple bedrooms on the second floor, but still a single-family house and nothing on the third floor. The plans that we have in front of us tonight are for a three-family house with one unit on each floor, first, second, and third.
Okay, that's fine. Okay, and, and for the agenda, it talks about a request for variance for front, side, and rear setbacks. Now, what does that mean? Because I think I heard the building inspector say that the foundation footprint meets table 2 requirements. So what are the variances, setback variances for a building that already exists?
I'll answer that.
Go ahead.
The problem is here is we have two different layers of zoning. So in res 1, we have one, two families, and then if you wanna do multi-family dwellings, the setbacks are huge, the lot size is huge, so they need dimensional relief.
Okay, that's fine. Okay, great. Thank you for that explanation. To the density, so this is a perfect example of, of what the residents of town, through their duly elected representative of town meeting, they don't want to see this type of density built, especially in the back bay, in the downtown area. If you look at other areas in close proximity that recent developments, it's very similar. And I can tell you from conversations that I've had with residents, they do not want to see this because it has a detrimental impact on the neighborhoods in terms of density. If we talk about parking, this, if you want a three-family, it's gonna require six parking spaces. And I assume the two of them are the garage. So the other four would be a driveway where you would be doing a Rubik's Cube, trying to get the vehicles in and out of the property. So School Street, parking on one side, Franklin Street, very difficult to traverse, especially when there's church services. And just one last thing is, this is kinda like a bait and switch, right? So we build this huge structure, we kind of beg forgiveness, and now we're looking to get permission to, to say that it's okay. I think two-family could probably pass muster, but three, three-family, I think, is out of the question. Thank you.
Thank you. So you would not be in favor of this?
Not in favor of a three-family, no.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else?
I'm not gonna get a... My name is George, well, I'm shy, I assume.
You have to, you have to go to the microphone.
You have to go to the microphone.
Your name and where you live, please.
My name is Phyllis Morin. I live on Trask Street.
Okay.
And I, I just assume you have all seen the size of this house.
We've been there.
Okay, that's my only thought, because that thing is humongous.
And are you in favor of this?
For a one-family.
Or against this? You're not in favor. Could you comment, please, so we can hear you?
I'm not in favor.
Okay.
And also, about the parking, that is a big issue.
Okay.
Where we live, there's parking on one side of our street, and I will tell you, it's very difficult on days, if a school bus is coming and you're, it's very hard. And now we're gonna have more cars that are probably gonna have to park maybe on Trask Street, I don't know.
Okay.
And with, when the winter comes, then what do we do? It is, I know, I mean, I'm not good at all of this stuff.
That's all right.
I just, I feel very sad.
It's your personal opinion. We're here to hear you.
And my husband has been in Danvers all his life and he never has remembered seeing a three-family house on that lot.
Okay.
And maybe he can tell you that, but...
Thank you.
Anyway, thank you for listening to me.
Thank you.
But I just, I know I get too...
That's all right.
You're fine.
But thank you.
Okay.
Okay. My name's Nelson Morin. I've lived in town all my life.
Okay.
I'm a town meeting member for 47 years.
Okay.
And I, I don't like to speak too often, but we live right around the corner for 54 years. This, this home here that they built is disgusting. It doesn't belong in that area. It doesn't have enough parking. There's Wells Auto Body, it's right across the street. We have enough problems with parking on both sides of Franklin Street. School Street is a difficult area. And it's too bad it got to this point. I can't understand why it got to this point. A one-family would've been nice, a nice little one-family in there, and it would've been perfect. But I think that you people will understand how we feel and I hope the neighbors, there's a few neighbors here that might wanna speak on it, but I'm sorry it got to this point. Thank you.
All right.
Can I ask the gentleman a question?
Yes.
You lived there all your life. Has there ever been a three-family on that property?
Matter of fact, I lived on Poffler Street when I was a little boy. Rigby's had a package store there.
Yeah.
In the back, they had a shed. It didn't go up. It just went in the back where they stored things. And that's what they had a problem with, I think, when you people approved the lot.
The shed, yeah.
Yeah, the shed. And that's the only thing that was there. There was never a three-family there.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mar.
Yes.
Hi, my name is Tori Adler, town meeting member, Precinct One. I live at 22 Oak, so every day when I walk out my back door, I'm staring directly at this enormous new house. Just as a matter of clarification, these are the minutes from September 11th, 2017, when the original variance was granted, and it describes a two-family with a package store. It does not describe a three-family. These are on the town website. I agree with everything that my neighbors just said. Parking is a serious concern in that area. I disagree with the characterization of the neighborhood. It's mostly multifamilies. I'm in a single-family owner-occupied house. A lot of the houses in that area are single-family owner-occupied houses. There are also a lot of older multifamilies. But it is not an area in which the predominant character is multifamily houses. Had I envisioned the size and scale of what has been built there, I would have been here in 2017 opposing any kind of variance to build on that lot. I understood it to be a small house, and I thought it's very nice to have that empty lot, but I can't expect it to remain empty, and a, a small, single-family would have been fine. It does feel like the builder has made some attempt to, the applicant has made some attempt to co-opt this process by permitting a single-family house, building something according to that permit, and then asking for variance to change it to a three-family. I don't understand what, what harm they incur by simply keeping it as a single-family house. I don't see that there's any unusual need on their part. And I think it sets precedent that I don't want to see set in my neighborhood.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for comments. Yes. Mr. Lyons.
Thank you, C.R. Lyons. I live at 14 Cottage Ave. I, like my neighbors, also agree that we, I think many of us actually saw, the Cahills were very forward with us, showed us drawings of the house that was to be built, and we absolutely supported that, and we saw things moving forward on a single-family home. We assumed that was what was going to be built. And as we saw the foundation go up, I think, or being poured, and then it being framed out, I think many of us were absolutely shocked at the size of the structure. And in, you know, walking in the neighborhood, talking to the contractors, saying, hey, what are you guys doing? They all said, oh, we're building a three-family. And that was where I think most of us found ourselves absolutely kind of blown away by what had happened. And so they built to the dimensional, the maximum dimensional allowances for a single-family home, and I think that's what they should be stuck with. And so I'm not in favor of this variance. They have not shown any hardship, and so no relief should be granted.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Bradstreet.
Bill Bradstreet, town meeting member, Precinct One. I can repeat what everybody else has said. I'll say upfront, I'm not in favor of this. It's, I don't care what is said, it's out of place where it is. If a single-family was first proposed, that's what it should be. And to get to the point where someone comes in here and says, well, we've got what we've got, we expect you to let us continue with or go with what we've built. And they should have known that they couldn't have built it or shouldn't have built it. And to come in and say, gee, we're sorry, we want you to let us go with what we've got. I've heard it too many times when I've been here. It's like, give me an inch, now it's a foot, now it's six feet. It has to stop. You give, you set rules, you tell people what they have to do, hold them to it. If he's built a building or someone's built a building that's, I tear it down. Build what you were allowed to build. I don't care. It's not my position to feel sorry for someone because they spent money on something they shouldn't have spent money on. That, to me, is not a hardship. It's trying to take advantage.
Yeah, just to be clear, he did submit plans for a single-family house, not him, but the builder, the owner. They did submit plans for a single-family house with, I believe, five bedrooms on the second floor. A single-family house. And that plan was approved by the building inspector, was approved by this board, and he does have a permit for a single-family house with five bedrooms. Whether or not it fits in that neighborhood, I don't know. But, so what he's constructed, if he just frames it out the way that he submitted plans, it will be allowed. It's just that he wants it now to be a three-family.
Well, again, as I said, I'm not in favor of it.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Okay.
May I respond to a couple of those things?
Absolutely.
Okay, so essentially, and it was not my intent to offend anybody.
Okay.
Relative to the historical status of the property, you know, we were going, I thought I was just going off of the minutes
Okay.
from the prior time, so it's not like I'm coming in here trying to pull some sort of a, I honestly thought it was a.
There's a lot of long-term people in Danvers.
Yeah, right, right. And I was born in 1982, so. So, so, you know, from a, from a compromised standpoint, you know, as far as, well, let me take one step back. Obviously, we know that we need to meet parking requirements. So we would comply with any parking requirements, and we can come back and bring a parking plan. And then, you know, the second item is, you know, if a, if a three-family was so offensive to the neighborhood, you know, we could also think about maybe modifying it to a two-family.
Okay. Is that it? Are there any other questions from the board? No? Okay. I guess, I guess probably the overriding question in my mind, and I think of everyone in this room, is, why did you do it the way you did it?
Well, I mean.
Why did you apply for a single-family house and now come back here for a three-family?
So just to preserve the, the variance, we were running out of time on that amount of time that was left in the meeting.
I think you had time.
Well, it was, I'm not sure that we did, because it was granted in 2017.
Okay.
And the purchase was not until October of 18.
Okay.
So there was, there was time ticking on that.
Okay. So you wanted to get a building up? Is that what you're?
Well, we didn't want to, we didn't want to lose the ability to build if the time had lapsed. I think it was February, I remember, six months.
Okay, so I'm just going to go around one more time. So you bought it last fall with thinking that you were going to get a three-family out of it, but you never filed with us until, when was the application?
April 11.
Okay, so six months to file with us, and you bought it with obviously an intent to have a three-family.
Yeah, I mean, it.
I'm, I'm just.
Yeah, so I mean, if there, you know, it's just if there was a better way for us to go about it, we would have wanted to vote it a better way. As far as, as far as, we were just looking to preserve, the owner was looking to preserve the, the variance, instead of having to keep coming back in and asking for extensions.
Okay. I'm going to go to the board for deliberations. Mr. Signetti.
Madam Chairman, I feel like I was duped in this whole thing, and I think maybe the board feels that way, too. This is an undersized lot. We, the good graces of this board, allowed a single-family house on this lot, which would not normally have been allowed, because we were told it was a family deal. They were going to put a small, little, single-family house on there. And we were duped because we just said, all right, meet the setbacks. And, and that'd be okay. Then I go by there and I see that ugly monstrosity that you call a single-family house. I will not vote for this for two-family, three-family, any family. I voted for a single-family house, and that's where I'm going to stick with.
Thank you.
Thanks, Madam Chair. You know, I, I just want to make a couple of points with my comments. I don't necessarily disagree with the attorney as to the composition of the neighborhood. It is multiple multifamilies there. However, this board, I believe, tries to bring things more into today's zoning and more into compliance. And I, I couldn't agree with Bob more that, you know, when this case was presented to us, and maybe, you know, in this case with the zoning board, us speaking for us, hindsight's 2020 here, you know, we said meet the setbacks. I was envisioning, and if the board remembers, there was a small house built on Oak Street that got razed. I think it was condemned, I want to say Griffin did it. It was a small, quaint, single-family house, and that's what I was envisioning on this lot. Like Bob said, it was a small lot to begin with. If, if you had come to me with a three-family then, I would have never voted for it. So I will not vote for this. I think what's there is too big. But we did say meet the setbacks, so we're unfortunately stuck with that. But I think a single-family is what's warranted here. And I will not vote for this.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I just, I just find it very brazen that you guys built a house that big and then come to us wanting it to be a three-family. It's just, I can't wrap my head around it. We agreed to a single-family. That's what it is. I will not vote for this the way it is.
Thank you. Jeff?
I will not vote for anything except, you know.
What we are.
In the future, what we already approved or something smaller, a single-family.
Okay.
I agree with the neighbors and fellow board members. I would not vote for this. Single-family, that's it.
Corinne?
I agree, too. I also have a hard time with contractors coming in, taking what should be a single-family home, and then coming to us, you know, crying hardship, and then want it to be a three-family, and have basically like a used car lot out in front for the neighbors to look at. So I am not voting for this.
And I will also not, not vote for this, so you don't have the votes to move forward. So you can withdraw, or we can deny the application? If we deny, then you can't come back for two years?
Yeah, then, based on that feedback, I think we'll withdraw.
Okay, all right.
Madam Chair, I move that we withdraw this application.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone. Thanks to the neighbors for comments.
All right, our final case of the evening. Target Corporation, Matthew Flansburgh, docket number 19-4823. Requesting a variance for directional signage. Height in the area increased in accordance with Section 37.7A of the Danvers zoning bylaws at 240 Independence Way.
We'll try to be nice to you. Well, calm down.
Tonight.
My name is Chris Stakes. I'm a civil engineering analyst with Timmy Horn and Associates. I'm here as the local representative for the Timmy Horn Development Services team. I'm setting up this project with Target, the retail store. And this is a nationwide initiative called the Drive-Up Program. And essentially what it is is a customer orders something online, and they pick that up at the business store. So in this case, it would be the Independence Way in Danvers. Conceptually, the way that this program works is that the, a customer would place an order on a mobile app or online, provide vehicle information, and a designated scheduled pickup time. And then when that time arrives, they would navigate to the store and find where it is that they need to pick up the order, like the drive-up parking spot location. And then a Target employee would be notified, bring the order out to the vehicle, verify the vehicle information, the order information as well. And then the order is forwarded to the vehicle, and at that point, the driver could then depart. And from arrival to departure, that process is about one and a half minutes. And so the, the request and what we're seeking a variance on is the directional signage bylaws that restricts the sign height to four feet high and the square footage of the sign faces to four square feet. So the signs that we're proposing, which is part of a nationwide initiative to provide this model of signage, would be 12 feet in height, and through all four faces of the sign, it would be about 13 and a half square feet. So it's a signed feature with the solar panel at the top. We feel that this is an ideal size for this specific sign to improve the wayfinding when the customer arrives to the lot. It could clearly and easily identify where it is they need to go. If they are unable to do that, that could certainly pose a safety concern with vehicles meandering, not knowing exactly where they need to pick up their order. So having it clear and concise in terms of the signage, having a tall sign where they can identify it right when they get into the lot to help alleviate congestion, alleviate the risk of safety for pedestrian traffic since this would be at the, near the entrance to the store, Target employees, pedestrians. And if it were four feet, then any large vehicles adjacent to the stalls or in occupied drive-up stalls, I think that would block the view of that, and this height would be ideal for, certainly for safety and for finding exactly where the stewardess to go to manage the lot.
Okay. Thank you. So just, just do the height again, just 12 feet?
Plus the solar panel, we include that.
I'll write Corinne's down.
Solar's exempt. Solar's exempt from July.
Is it?
Yes.
Really?
It's part of the green initiative.
You know, it's been exempt from a lot, for a lot, even before, it's been in the exemptions, after a while, for a year, for a long time.
Wow, wow.
Go back and the first energy crisis.
Back in Carter.
The solar, right, the solar panels back then were used to heat hot water generally.
Oh, yeah.
And electricity.
Okay.
So that's why it's in there.
Do you want to comment on, on this?
No, it's, it's pretty cut and dry. It's, you know, again, it's, it's more or less directional signage. I understand what they're trying to do, but again, ours is very specific and limited, so I thought this was the best avenue for them to present it.
Okay, thank you. All right. Corinne?
Now, you said that there's going to be designated parking. You need the sign so people know where that designated parking is. Well, you say employees will be coming out. Are they coming out from the storefront to actually bring these items out to people that are in their cars?
That's my understanding, but.
Okay, so, so there's no like storage facility that's going to be outside in the parking lot that's going to house this additional merchandise?
That's my understanding.
Okay.
They have it already all blocked off.
I, I mean, I've seen it, but, you know, it's kind of hard to visualize what it's going to look like once you have the big sign.
I mean, especially in the winter with, you know.
Yeah.
Anything else?
That's it.
Okay. Ken?
Is there any plan for a snow remover? Is this going to hinder like, in the way of like moving snow from the parking lot? And do you ever consider that?
My opinion is that I don't think it would hinder, but I personally would not consider it.
And, I mean, so pretty much, we're just commenting about, I mean, asking questions about the signs. Right, everything else is cut and dry. The cars can, this is already decided.
It's part of the parking lot.
So they can do this?
Yeah, I mean, there's parking spaces there now.
We told him, if we don't limit the number of directional signage, so, you know, he could have as many signs as he wanted, four feet high with four square feet of signage, as long as it wasn't branded as directional signage.
So he could have signs that say pickup location, target pickup, you know, so, not target, but it could say.
In this case, it's.
But because he wants it tall.
Twelve footers, yeah. So we can't ask about pedestrian, uh, safety of employees? They can have lanes, I mean, for pedestrians to safely walk out through these cars? Stuff they're going to be walking across the parking lot? I mean, is there going to be a safe zone for employees?
I think they would utilize the adjacent crosswalks from the store entrances.
So it, so is this around the back?
It's right in the front of the store.
Right in front.
Right in front of the store.
Right in front.
Between, there's two entrances.
There's the crosswalk.
And this is in the middle.
And there's the. Okay. I have no other questions.
Jeff?
Yeah. My only question is that we're going to want to see one of these in front of every store in town? Because they're all going to do it, right? They're all going to have pickup to compete with each other.
I think we, at Liberty Tomorrow, we did the pizza pickup, right? Long time ago, out back.
They didn't have a sign like this.
Yeah.
Polk Arries has to pick up.
No, it was Pizzeria Regina or something.
Oh, that's, that's what I mean, yes.
Yeah. That was a long time ago. We approved that. It was out back.
But it wasn't sign, it wasn't, didn't properly tell signs.
Anyway, what are your questions?
I don't have any other questions.
I don't really have any. I have a dumb question. What if somebody parks in this space? You got to call tow trucks and get them out of there and all that?
Well, they're going to have these arrows.
People are stupid. They'll park there. They're going to just say, oh, I got a spot right up front. Is that what the criteria is? You'd have to call a tow truck and have them towed out of there?
I'm not sure. What I know is that there are four spots and very rarely.
I guess what I'm asking, what, just, just the red lines keeps everyone out of there? I mean, is it, how do they know not to park there?
What did he say? I didn't miss that.
We're asking him.
I have a tow company on the side.
We're asking him a whole series of questions he can't answer.
I don't have any other questions.
I just think with clear signage and clear striping, just make it as clear as possible to make it only for people who.
John?
Hi, Mr. Jakes. Can you tell me how many stores in the state of Massachusetts currently have this? Hey, Penny?
I can't see that one.
You don't know? And what about hours of operation?
My understanding is, as long as the store's open.
Hours of store hours? I don't know, I, I don't think, well, no, I guess this is a question. So, the store has two entrances that have crosswalks that are painted. It would make more sense to me that this location would be across from one of those crosswalks, because I think one of the other board members asked about how employees would walk out to this. So, I don't know if that falls under the comment section, or I'm going to guess you don't have an answer on why they picked that location.
Well, that's where the handicap parking is adjacent to the.
Yeah, the handicap is at the end of each one.
Okay, so that's the answer. Okay, no further questions, thanks.
I'm just amazed that people can't drive up, walk in the store and say, I ordered a TV, can you deliver it to my car? You know, I assume you drive up with your cell phone, and you call and you say, I'm here. Right? And then the one, the one on the other.
Unless they arrive in our parks, then they can.
You've got to call, right? Alright, so now whoever we call has got to find Andy or Joe, whoever delivers this thing.
Right after they tow the car.
I don't have any questions. This is ludicrous.
I'm just going to question the height. So I'm trying to think, this ceiling is probably about twelve feet? What do you think?
The door is seven feet.
Seven, six, thirteen, so not quite. Probably to the bottom of the exit sign?
That's about, it's pretty close to twelve feet.
We could put a cell tower on it.
You know, we need to have like a bank that has the feet.
How high is a car? How tall is a car? Does anybody know? An SUV, let's say.
It could be six feet. Six.
Six.
One, six, six and a half.
So you want this to extend above the cars so people can see that are driving around the parking lot, they can see where to go, right?
Yeah, we don't want there to be any confusion about where the location is.
Okay.
Even if there's cars like this on the cell.
Okay. So how, who came up with twelve feet? That's what I was just kind of wondering if it needs to be twelve feet.
I think.
You're the engineer, right?
I'm the representative for the team here looking, in conjunction with Target and McDonald's. They looked into various heights, and twelve feet is what they wanted to do with nationally.
So this is a national?
It is, this is a twelve feet.
Okay, and what is lit up on this?
The white lettering.
Uh, the whole, the whole twelve feet except for the base? Or just the lettering part? Just the white lettering that says drive up? Okay. You believe so, okay. And it says batteries, so it's not, you're not wiring this, you're just.
Solar.
Solar? So it's just solar to the batteries? Okay, I guess I don't have any other questions.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
What is the hardship on this variance, other than it's good for business? I mean, again, a variance, you need a hardship.
Okay, they wrote you a long storybook. They wrote you a long story.
Yeah, I want him to tell me what the hardship is.
Sure, I think if it, if it were less, I think it could pose a safety risk. I think, I think it's really important for.
Oh, excuse me, but if you didn't have it at all, there'd be no safety risk, right?
You're creating the safety risk.
You're creating your own safety risk.
I think.
Don't let him badger you.
I think in part, it can alleviate congestion in the store by customers coming to pick up.
So that's a hardship alleviating congestion at Target. I have no other questions.
Do you have any other comments for us? It's hard being last, you know? We're going to go to the audience and then come back for deliberation, but I just didn't know if there was anything else you wanted to say now.
Is the twelve foot tall the issue, or is it just anything else?
Well, when we do comments, you'll be able to hear what people say about the height, okay?
Yeah, thank you.
I mean, we, this drive-up stuff is typical. We are seeing it at every CVS, we're seeing it every Dunkin' Donuts, we're seeing, I mean, so we, we're seeing, what?
McDonald's.
McDonald's, everything, we're dealing with drive-ups all the time. And this is obviously not at the end of a building, so, you know, you can't really have a drive-up. Because you don't have an end. So, but it's something that we're typically asked to comment on, so. Alright, so let me go to the audience. Mr. Duggan.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Matthew Duggan, town meeting member precinct one. So, just trying to get a sense of how common this is today. Are there other stores in Danvers that already have this type of signage?
Where somebody runs out and gives you what you ordered?
Well.
I don't know, but I.
Just a kind of a standalone, so I'm trying to visualize it, because you probably have some, some drawings. But this is a cube, a sign that has four sides to it?
Yes.
And what's, and how large is the, each side? In terms of square footage?
Like you said.
Looks like twelve inches, maybe?
What?
Twelve, about a foot.
Okay.
Eleven and a quarter inch.
Okay. Alright, that's important, because it's, the signs stand alone out in the middle of a parking lot, you know, subjected to the weather.
If you drove over to Target, there's eight parking spaces that have been designated.
And it's installed on a concrete footing, or some type of.
It's like a light pole.
Like a light pole type of installation?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, I see, okay. And it's, so I see the solar panel at, on the top. This will be lit in, only during the hours of the, when the store is open? Or it'll be just lit, like, all the time?
I don't know. I thought he said during store hours, but.
Would you take it as a condition?
Yeah, because I'm trying to, I'm just trying to be proactive in thinking what's going to, what it's going to look like down the road a few years from now when we see a lot more of these.
Right.
This is kind of like, almost like a test case. So if we see these a few years from now, and they're all lit up, and you're driving by at night, and you see the parking lot full of these illuminated, these stanchions. I mean, I know the, the parking lights, I think, are, not all of them are lit at night. I think there's just a few, when, once the mall is shut down, so. Just concerned about that, so. Alright, well.
There's only going to be one, one of these.
For, for Target, but then there's a lot of other stores there.
Right, I understand.
They'll probably see this and say, hey, that's a good idea, so now we'll have like, you know, others. And they'll be proliferate, not only here at the mall, but there could be at other locations. So, you know.
Right.
At all the big boxes, or even maybe downtown. You could just, every store has their own.
Everybody's into convenience.
Right, well, they don't want to.
Go online, order what you want, drive down, it's just like Amazon. Get it.
You could have them outside the schools, right? So when you wanted to pick up your children, you could just, somebody would bring them out to you.
After they get the car towed.
Any other comments? Mr. Bradstreet?
Bill Bradstreet, Tommy member precinct one. I don't think, when we had our first, and I don't know when it was, drive-through, whether it was a bank, McDonald's, wherever, I don't think any of us, certainly I didn't envision that it would come to this point, over this period of time, that someone would order something. And I think it was said, being too lazy, get out of the car to walk in the store, perhaps to pick up that item, and perhaps while they walk in or out, see something else they need. Just to make it convenient for this type of pickup. Again, if it starts with this, where does it start?
Well, I think a lot of people, if they have small children and they have them in car seats in the back of their car, then they have to get the kids out, the strollers out, to walk in, to pick up something and come back. I'm just saying, this is what a lot of people feel at this point, that it, you know, that it's easier to be able to just pick it up and not have to do that, so. That's why they go to McDonald's.
I, I understand, I hear what you're saying, but up to this point, it was never that, it was.
Times are changing.
You know, you're getting older.
Very old, very old. I, I guess I'm still content with the way things were in the past, I'm.
Times, they are changing.
Yes, they are.
Alright, thank you.
You need to download your Target mobile app.
I don't even use the computer.
Any other comments? Yes.
David Kennison, town precinct member, precinct three. I have just one comment. I don't understand why Target didn't put this in back of the building. I frequent that mall a lot, and eight spaces are eight spaces. And, you know, you can do what you want out back, there's plenty of doorways and whatever. It's from safety standpoint, more people walking across there, creating traffic. I just, I think it was a poor location. And then second, if you put up a twelve-foot sign, everybody else is going to put up a twelve-foot sign. And I don't think it's right. We're smart enough to figure out that the red spaces are for pickup.
Okay, thank you. Okay.
If you're not told me I'll park in that person's time.
Corinne?
I, I just have a question. Did, like, this whole, kind of like, situation, did it have to go in front of the planning board to get approval? Or are we the only stop for the sign height?
Just administratively, just administrative modifications.
Just us.
Okay.
Yes, it's a signage.
Right, and we're just, we're just ruling on the signage. You know, I guess if the solar component turns off at, you know, when the, when the store closes for the evening, then I would probably vote for it.
I'd rather have this in the back or on the side where it's less congested. I think it's.
There's no side, though.
Well, maybe the back, the back. It just seems very chaotic when you're trying to cross in front of the store, and cars are trying to navigate, and to add people walking across, employees walking across with boxes, and streaming across. And, yeah, so I just don't like the idea. I understand progress and stuff, we need to, this is probably going to happen, happen in one form or another, but I just think in front, it's a little too unsafe and congested. And also, in here, it says you need twelve-foot tall sign because of a van or a SUV, but I, I've never seen a van ten feet tall, I mean. So I think it's just excessive height as well. I mean, the limit is four feet, right? We have, and there's probably a reason for that. I mean, just aesthetics and other reasons, I would say. But I think twelve, I don't know why twelve feet was picked, it just seems, it's taller than a basketball hoop. I mean, it just seems very high. But I, I just don't, yeah, like the idea of that in front, anyways. And also, you could have direction or notes on the webpage. I could say where the pickup is, where the red lines are in front of the store, or in back of the store, and you don't probably really need that big beacon in, in the front there. That, that's just my thoughts.
Okay.
Jeff?
Yeah, I don't think I would vote for this as presented, I just think it's too big.
Okay.
And I as well think that twelve feet is, it's totally unnecessary. I wouldn't vote for it like this.
Okay, Jeff?
Yeah, I just don't like the location of it. I don't know if I'm totally opposed to it, I understand the convenience factor, but I just think that it's not a good location. The applicant doesn't seem to, says it's going to be a nationwide program, but hasn't been able to tell us where any of these are located, so I could even go look at one. And doesn't sound like any have happened in Massachusetts yet. You know, maybe there's a reason for this, but I don't see in front of the store. I just, I don't, I don't think the location's a smart one for safety. I think that, you know, as someone who goes to Target, it's pretty congested there all the time.
Yeah.
And I just wouldn't vote for it as it's presented.
I think we're talking about two things here. A custom pickup, which I don't have a problem with. But this sign, twelve feet tall, when you could have as many four-feet directional signs as you want, I mean, it could be, you have to be the dumbest customer in the world, you could go arrow by arrow by arrow by arrow, right to that door. So, no, I, I think we're opening up a can of worms by voting for a twelve-foot sign. And like I said facetiously, but for crying out loud, we might as well put a cell tower on top of that, too. I won't vote for this.
Okay. So I, I understand what you're trying to accomplish. In terms of, you know, people bringing things out to cars, I, in my opinion, it's not really any different than a customer going in, buying a TV in, in a cart, and bringing it out, just going to have it, the store employee bringing that same cart out with a TV in it. So to me, it's the same, it really doesn't create any more traffic. I, I don't like the height of it. I think it's too high. I don't have a problem with the concept, because I think this is a lot of what people are, we're seeing it all the time, all the stores are advertising, order online, come and pick it up. And I, so I think this is the way everything is going to go, and I can understand why some people just don't want to have to get out of their cars, especially if it's winter or you have children in your cars. So, so I would agree, I would vote for this, but not at this height. And I don't know if you have another suggestion for height? And I don't even know if you have the votes, even if you lowered it, so.
Madam Chair, another comment, I don't see a hardship in this either, for a variance.
Okay.
Yeah, certainly recognize the issues with the twelve feet height. Would a ten feet overall height be acceptable?
So, how high is the solar panel? I didn't, let me see. Two feet?
I'm sorry, with the adjustment, two feet would be the limit from the base, essentially.
Right, I'm just trying to, so the, the pole is twelve, and then the solar panel is on top? And I'm just trying to see what's the height of the solar panel? What's that little logo thing?
That would be the drop-up, drop-down logo.
Oh, I see, okay.
Madam Chair, looks like it's another foot and a half. Another foot and a half on top of the twelve.
This, this here is a foot, is one foot?
It says thirty inches, I think.
Right here, though?
I think you've got to go by this. Thirty inches.
Thirty degrees.
That's a degree.
One foot four. Oh, that's the tight one.
So this right here is one foot? It looks like one foot.
That's thirty degrees, sorry. Yeah, it's a couple.
Why do you say that? Doesn't this?
Because this is, because this is a one-foot dimension here, and that distance from here to here looks bigger than that.
So you're not real, you think two feet?
I think two feet, two feet.
Foot and a half, two feet somewhere in that area.
I think it's two feet above that.
Oh, here you go, yeah. Solar panel, sounds like seventy-one. Dimension's two foot three by two foot six.
That's the panel.
That's the panel itself, not a height.
Because it would be angled.
At thirty-two degrees.
So it's less than that two feet, because it's at an angle.
Two feet three by three and six.
Yeah, that sounds about right.
So.
Talking thirteen and a half feet.
Yeah.
So people are going to know to come to the front of the store anyway, right? I mean, they're going to be told. I think it's safer to come to the front than the back. I don't like coming to the back.
Well, on this store, there is, you know, mathematically, there is no back.
Right.
There's a grass strip, and then you're on Independence Way. And the other, the corner of the back is the loading dock, so they don't really have a back, and they don't have a side here.
Where those tractor trailers are, yeah.
Yes, no, there's no other. Yeah, so there's no other place for them to pick up.
Yeah.
Except the front of the store.
Except the front, yeah.
Yeah, but what about the grass? Couldn't they remove some grass and make it another?
It's, there's tractor trailers back there all over.
The whole back of the store is a.
Loading dock.
It's, it's, that's where they're storing, it's rack storage in the very back of the store.
Yeah.
We've been in there recently because they did, they did.
They did a renovation.
Only moved over.
So I think, you know, maybe a total, in my opinion, a total of 10 feet, which would be eight plus two, would be the most that I would be willing to approve. And I would have to go back to the board and see whether you even, you need four votes for a variance out of five.
And you're considering the solar panel in that?
So, so eight.
Eight plus another two.
Plus two in the solar panel. If the solar panel's two feet, so eight feet plus two feet. I mean, you can continue this and go talk to Target and come back at our next meeting, which is July 15th, and with a new proposal or with additional information, if you would rather do that.
I was allowed to give two options.
Okay.
Madam Chairman, in all fairness to the applicant, why don't we poll the board to see if, would you say eight feet?
Eight feet.
Why don't we see, because if he comes back and two of us don't want it anyway?
Right.
You know, let's be fair to the guy.
Well, he's, right. Do you wanna do that? Okay. Go ahead. So.
I, I would vote for it at eight feet.
Okay.
I, I wouldn't. I don't think there's a hardship for this. At least it wasn't explained.
Okay. Jeff?
I would vote for it.
Eight feet?
I would vote for eight feet.
I would not. Yeah, because I don't like the location.
Okay.
I would not vote for it. I don't see a hardship.
Okay. So these are the five voting members and you have three of five votes, so. So you don't have enough votes to get it approved?
I, I do have one alternative to present. So this would, this alternative here would be a total of seven feet.
Okay.
It would remove the solar panel, excuse me.
It's not gonna solve the problem that people don't like the location, man.
That's true.
So it's not a cube anymore. It's a regular whole sign. That's probably worse. Yeah, I, I think the cube is less intrusive. Yeah. I mean, what is it? Is there anything that anybody feels they would approve or you, are you gonna ask him to continue?
He can do four-foot signs by right, as many as he wants.
Yeah, but who wants them all over the parking lot? Plus the snow removal.
Well, you can put up four everywhere in the 10, so what's gonna stop them from that? Or at the eight, you know what I mean?
Point well taken.
Do you wanna continue and go talk to the powers that be, what they wanna do? I don't know what, I don't know, it doesn't sound like.
Doesn't sound like any of the alternatives were.
Is there any?
Are you doing this now? Like, do you have the pickup service now? You don't know? I mean, if, if they're doing it now and it's working now, what do you need a sign for?
Yes.
That would be the final institution of it.
So it's just the two of them?
I mean, that's, that's a, if you come back here, that's an answer I'd like, you know, I, is the store doing this now without the sign?
I would love to see an actual Target location where this is installed and run.
Yeah, I think that's.
Look at it.
If there was one in.
Yeah, that's the next thing. Where, where else, where can we go see one?
Are we the first?
My understanding is, is no.
Okay.
But I'm, I'm not 100% sure and I could come back.
If they could, if he could, excuse me, Madam Chairman, if he could provide information to the board before, you know, like the Thursday before, where we could go and see one.
Right.
That would be really helpful.
Okay. So is there another location and?
Call the building inspector and tell him.
Well, I asked that question. The applicant didn't have an answer, so.
Well, that's, we're asking him to provide that information.
Go and find out. Maybe Saugus or someplace has one that. Is there one in Uber? Yeah.